All right. Good evening, everyone, and I apologize for the delay in getting going. We had a little bit of some technical difficulties. This is the June 8th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education, and I would like to ask everyone to please stand wherever you are and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder for board members, please keep your microphones muted unless you are speaking. Ms. Griffin, can you do a roll call, please? So all board members, please unmute so that you can respond to the roll call. Ms. Griffin?
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Betsy Ratner? Adam D. Young?
Here.
Andrew Fowler?
Here.
Warren Palowski?
Present.
Rita Hennessy?
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Present.
Una Petrowski?
Here.
Susan Glennon?
Here.
Oh, sorry. Nicole Wasson?
Yeah, sorry.
Susan Glennon?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All present. All right. So good evening again. This is the June 8th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education. I'm going to start the meeting off with our first agenda item. We have some special guests with us this evening. We have our four student representatives, two from Jonathan Law and two from Foreign, and we invited them to tonight's meeting so that we can properly thank them for their service to us this past year. We're so sorry that we can't be with you in person, but we thought this would be the next best thing. So we have with us all seniors Amelia Mauer and Rowan Monahar from Jonathan Law and Karina Massey and Lucas Bregard from Foreign. So welcome. You guys, the four student reps, you can unmute your mics. So I'm going to ask you a question in a minute. So it's been a longstanding tradition for the Milford Board of Education to offer the opportunity for student representatives from the high schools to attend our business meeting where they stand in front of us and the cameras to report on the news and activities in their respective schools. The sharing of this information with the board helps keep us informed on the many activities our high school students engage in. It's a part of our agenda that I know board members value and look forward to, and we offer our sincere appreciation for the time that you've all set aside from your very busy schedules to meet with us each month. So I hope it's also been a valuable experience for you as well. So I did want to ask each of you, could you just share with us what your plans are for next year? Karina?
I'll be going to UConn next year to study elementary education.
Sweet. Very good. And Rowan?
I'll be going to Tufts next year to study clinical psychology.
Wow. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amelia?
Going to Central Connecticut to study history.
Yay. Very good. And last but not least, Lucas?
I'll be going to American University in Washington, DC to study international studies.
Very good. I know a few other kids who have done that. It's a great program. So again, we just want to express our deep appreciation to you all. And we ask that you, we can't shake your hands, but I'd like everyone to just give a round of applause to them, please, all together. And you should be on the lookout for a little token of our appreciation for you. You know, if there's anything we can ever do for you, please reach out. And I don't think you have any schoolwork left to do, right? Are you all done with your schoolwork? But we won't be upset if you leave the meeting as soon as we're done. Feel free. Our high school principals, did you want to add anything? Mr. Berkowitz, Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say, I think Karina and Lucas know how much I think about them. They're just wonderful students, wonderful people. Their future is so bright, and I'm so proud of them.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Full disclosure, I actually tried to fail them both so I could have them for another year. Their parents were excited about that. Neither were. So Amelia Mauer said no, so they will have it passed. But they've been great.
Very good.
Thank you both of them for their leadership and as part of the class of 2020.
Great. So yes, thank you again. The future is in your hands. So we expect great things from the four of you. All right?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, feel free to go on with your plans for the evening, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Probably all use Zoom meetings, so you know how to leave the meeting, right? All right. And then I'm going to move on to the Chairs Report. So the first order of business under the Chairs Report is our appointment of a new board member. So the name of Emily McDonough Souza has been submitted by the Fifth District to fill the seat that was recently vacated. She's attending our virtual meeting tonight. Where is she? I'm having a hard time finding her now. Is she still here? There she is. Ms. Souza is a lifelong Milford resident and a graduate of Milford Public Schools where she attended Orange Ave, Harborside, and Foreign High School. She went on to attend UConn and Quinnipiac School of Law where she received her Juris Doctorate, and she is currently an attorney with a New Haven law firm. So Ms. Petrowski, do you have a motion?
Yes, Una Petrowski. I move that the Board of Education approves the appointment of Emily McDonough Souza to the unexpired term of the Fifth District seat vacated by Cynthia Twist.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Fowler? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry. Ms. Griffin has to do a roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Adam D. Young?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
Yes, of course.
Una Petrowski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner?
Yes, yes, yes. I had her as a student. She's great.
Nicole Wasson?
Yes, welcome.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Nine, nine zero.
Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Welcome, Emily.
Thank you.
So with that said, we do have our City Clerk, Ms. Karen Fortunati, with us this evening to administer the oath of office to Ms. Souza so that she can join our meeting officially tonight. Ms. Fortunati?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so I can't see Emily. So can you raise your right hand? Is she raising?
Yeah, she's raising her right hand.
Hi. Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully execute and discharge your duties and responsibilities according to law as a member of the Board of Education of the City of Milford to the best of your ability so help you, God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Emily. Very nice.
Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome. All right, so that order of business is taken care of. Ms. Fortunati, thank you for joining us this evening. We won't be upset if you leave the meeting as well.
Okay, thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So just to continue on with my Chairs Report, I'm happy to report to the board that on our behalf, I did record two messages in the past couple of weeks. An end-of-year message to our teachers, parent educators, and parents of the year, along with an expression of gratitude to all the staff members. And I provided a brief congratulatory message to the Foreign seniors for their senior scholarship ceremony that will be aired on Wednesday. I want to remind board members of the summer meeting schedule. We have June 22nd, an executive session for Dr. Kutaida's annual review, time to be determined. We have our regular business meeting on July 13th. We have a special meeting on July 27th, a special meeting on August 10th. Both of those will be for budget updates. And then we have our regular business meeting on August 24th. Just a reminder to the board that we do routinely hold that business meeting later in the month to allow administration extra time to plan and report to us on the start of the school year. And lastly, I would be remiss if I did not mention that this evening, this is really sad for me, is Ms. Swift's last meeting, right, Ms. Swift? She'll be retiring. I think I speak for all when I express heartfelt gratitude for her many, many, many years of service in Milford Public Schools. If I'm not mistaken, you've been here your entire career. Your student-centered approach to your craft is the envy of many educators across the state, and many people have told me how lucky we have been to have you here. I know your predecessor will have big shoes to fill, but as much as we'd love for you to stay, I don't think we can begrudge you some happy retirement years. And so we all want to wish you just a very happy retirement, and I hope you won't be a stranger.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Are there liaison reports this evening? Raise your hand if you have a liaison report so I know. Okay, I'm just going to quickly give a brief report on ACES. Just a reminder, the ACES Liaison meeting, liaison position is open. In the interim, I've been looped into the communications. So ACES is serving as the RESC conduit for the regional restart committees. A student survey was shared with superintendents, and I did check in with Dr. Kutaia when I received that information, and she did indicate that it would be sent out. So hopefully, that was done, and it provided administration with some useful information. Are there any other, no other liaison reports at this time? You know, it's a quiet month for liaison roles. Okay, seeing none, then I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Kutaia for her first report.
Excuse me, Ms. Glennon. I think I saw Mr. Fowler's hand up. Is that correct?
Oh.
Yeah, I was just.
I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't see it.
Yeah, Warren and I had the permanent school facilities building committee a few weeks ago. We discussed ongoing renovations at West Shore, security infrastructure upgrades at multiple schools, the roof replacements at Jonathan Law, and also additions and renovations at Pumpkin Delight. And that's all I can, all I have to say. I don't know if I can say anything else, but.
Everything's moving along.
It's always West Shore.
Okay, thank you for the report. Okay, Ms., Dr. Kutaia, then I'll turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. We have a number of items we'd like to share with the board this evening. First, starting with an approval for graduation dates. We do have a unique request of the board in that we will have multiple ceremonies being held at our high schools this year, and therefore, we will ask the board to approve multiple dates. Proposing that we start with July 7th, where the Academy will have their graduation ceremony at 9:00 AM, and then Foreign and Law will also have ceremonies that evening, one at 5:00 and one at 7:30. Then July 8th, again, ceremonies for Foreign and Law, one at 5:00 and one at 7:30. And then the 9th, one at 5:00 and one at 7:30. So let me explain what we're doing now that you have the July 7th, 8th, and 9th. So while I'll explain what our layout is for ceremonies, just clarification, what's before the board is the approval of dates. But I want you to understand why there are so many. We have met with students, parents, staff members. We've even surveyed formally students and parents and asked them about what their desires and interests are in holding graduation this year in midst of a pandemic quarantine. And we've been trying to be responsive to the changing executive orders of the governor. What we heard from our stakeholders is that they want as much as possible a traditional ceremony. And that would mean almost 1,000 people at the football field with students walking onto the field and grabbing their diploma. We know that's not possible because of the executive orders that limit the number of people that could be outdoors congregated together. The more recent executive order by the governor allows a little wiggle room, which you're so thankful for. It allows for up to 150 participants, and that would include students and guests, and it would have to be outdoors. And there are strict cleaning and sanitizing procedures that would need to occur in between groups. So we are able to, with the great help of the administrators who are at this meeting this evening, in the event that we have any questions, been able to break this up into five small ceremonies for our larger high schools and one ceremony for the Academy. And that we will need, we worked with the Health Department, Milford's Health Department. We're going to, we have to build in about 90 minutes in between ceremonies to do the cleaning. There are other procedures and protocols, of course, that we will follow. Temperature screening, hand sanitizer, et cetera, social distancing. But we believe this is the best plan because it gets us as close to a traditional ceremony as possible. It'll be on our home fields, on the campus of the Academy. It'll put our students together. There'll be limited guests. Each student will have two guest passes. But we think it is, considering only about a month ago, we were thinking we'd have to have a virtual graduation ceremony. We're so thankful for this option. So I hope the board will consider the approval of July 7th, 8th, and 9th. And we do have rain dates because it's July and there are storms. And there are three nights of potential rain. So it will be July 10, 13, and 14 will be our rain dates. So that is for the board to consider.
Dr. Kutaia, if I could ask you a technical question in your opinion, do we need, should we include the rain dates in our motion?
I don't believe so because, you know, nature happens, and the board has been notified of those dates, so.
Okay. All right. Ms. Petrowski, you have a motion?
Yes, Una Petrowski. I move that the Board of Education adopts July 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2020 as the dates for high school graduation according to the schedule established by administration.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Fowler, seconds. All right, do we have any discussion about the motion? Mr. D. Young?
I just had a question, if I could. So if it's, if the students aren't graduating until July, but technically, they will have graduated. So if a student has to leave right after graduation date, let's say they have someplace that they need to be, June 15th, will they technically be graduated?
Yes, this is a ceremony that celebrates the accomplishment. I confer all diplomas, whether a student is present or not. So they technically, upon completion of graduation requirements as per Board of Education policy, they are graduated.
Okay, all right.
And each principal confirms that the completion requirements have been fulfilled, and I confer diplomas. That's usually how it works.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or discussion? My only comment is that it's nice to put this behind us. I know our students and our parents have been anxiously awaiting some kind of concrete information about graduation. So I want to thank administration. I know that you've been tossing around a lot of different options. I know that, how much work that was. So I want to just thank you for all your efforts, and you're keeping the students first and foremost, right up front where they should be. So without any further ado, may we have a roll call vote, Ms. Griffin?
Adam D. Young?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
Yes.
Una Petrowski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner?
Yes.
Nicole Wasson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Ten zero.
All right, so that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I want to publicly recognize our administrators who are at this meeting. This has been no easy task. It has hurt our brains and our hearts because we really wanted to do the right thing, and I want to thank them for, like you said, Ms. Glennon, putting kids first. And I think we've landed in the right place. So thank you, Mr. Berkowitz, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Yanti. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Yes.
And like the students, we know you have work to do because you haven't completed your work. So don't feel compelled to have to stay on for the rest of the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night. Oh, I forgot about you. I'm sorry, Ms. Yanti.
Okay.
Can I move on to the next item, Ms. Glennon?
Yes.
So Blessing, I'd like to share my screen. Is that okay?
Yes, you can.
I can't get to my screen because, hold on, just need a moment. Can everybody see that?
I believe so.
Yes.
Oh, hold on. Okay. Ms. Petrowski, you're the only one I could see. Can you give me a thumbs up if you could see my screen? Great, thank you. So I'd like to give the board a little bit of a preview of what we'll be discussing with staff and families this week. So while you are invited to attend our Zoom meetings on the information sessions on restarting for 2021, under this agenda item of COVID-19 on the superintendent's report, I really like to share with this board how we are ramping up to prepare to restart 2021. And this is more of a roadmap than a provision of solid answers. And I'll explain why as I go through the presentation. And I'll just go through because I may be able to answer questions you may have. And Ms. Glennon, if that's okay, we'll just take questions at the end, okay?
Yes, thank you. Questions at the end.
So I just want to refresh everyone's memory because it feels like forever ago, right, that we closed our school buildings. And they were closed on March 16th. We announced on Thursday, March 12th, that we will be closing our buildings. The last day that students were in our buildings was March 13th. March 16th, we started Phase 1 of our virtual learning. And that was a local decision because at the time, each community was making decisions all on their own primarily with conversations with, of course, the Health Department in each municipality. But it was Milford Public Schools. We decided that we would close on March 16th. Lo and behold, the Governor's Executive Order 7C closed Connecticut schools effective March 17th. So while the closure of school buildings started as an individual decision by school district, the Governor came and closed all schools in Connecticut. And then for, if you remember, it was for a time being. And then on May 5th, the Governor closed schools for the remainder of the year. We still are awaiting orders and guidance for reopening for the 2021 school year. So while it may have started as an individual decision, the reopening of buildings will be governed by the state. So we have yet to receive those orders or guidance. It's supposed to be sometime this month, and superintendents across the state are anxious to get it so that we can start finalizing plans. Of course, as I'm going to show you tonight, all school districts are planning for multiple options. So in Milford, I feel very, very strongly that we're not actually reopening because, in my opinion, we never really closed the learning process. But rather, we are restarting the process of opening our buildings and reuniting our students and staff in a safe, relationship-based way. So I just want us to be cognizant as a school district, our terminology, the words we use really signals what our intentions are. So I feel strongly that in Milford, we will restart learning in the fall, potentially in school buildings, depending on what those orders look like. For this board's presentation, I've included a couple slides, which I may or may not include as I speak with families, and this is one of them. Because I really want us, as leaders of the school district, as I've shared with the administrators already, to ponder two questions. One is, how do we capture this time of change as a time of progress? I've heard a lot on the podcasts, a lot of literature that I'm reading, that people may not want to be in such a hurry to get back to normal, but really consider the question, how can we be better than normal? And I think this question captures that. Can this be a time of progress as we're given an opportunity to revision how our schools function? The second question, particularly timely for this board as our Board of Ed goals are expiring in 2020, is this also a good time to assess and reevaluate our purpose, goals, and plans, and how we will achieve them? So something for this board and for our administrators to think about as we move forward, is this an opportunity where we can evoke some progress that we've been wanting to take hold at Milford Public Schools? Just something to think about. So the draft model of restarting 2021 will have a couple of key features. One, as you will see in a model that I'm about to show you, at the center of all of our decisions will be, how can we protect lives and continue to nurture minds and hearts? Please note, though, that the prioritization will be on health and safety. While I know many have questions about academic rigor catching up, our first priority is to make sure that we are not going to be a place where this virus spreads even more quickly. So we'll have to protect lives first, while at the same time, considering how we're nurturing our academic learning and our relationships. Secondly, any model for restarting will need to, have to, adhere to all executive orders and guidance. Again, I'll hearken back to a couple slides ago. While we may want to do something, we may not be allowed to because of what's coming from the state. We're just not sure yet. And as is characteristic of this entire shutdown, I'm sure that other organizations and sects of the economic world in Connecticut, we get information that changes, not just daily, but multiple times a day sometimes. So we are going to be responsive to the most current available information that we have at the time. So we are preparing for three different teaching and learning scenarios. Let me explain them to you. And without guidance, what we're doing is spending a lot of time getting ready for three possibilities, all of which may happen, or maybe only one will happen. We're just not sure. One is a full face-to-face return for all or some of our students. So we're preparing our buildings to receive students again. We're just not sure how many students, what grade levels, we'll be able to take back, depending on the scenario. I'll explain that to you in just a second. Second model we're preparing for is a hybrid model, meaning some of our student time will be spent face-to-face, coupled with some distance learning. So it may not be full-time physically in our buildings, but a part-time face-to-face and a part-time distance learning. And the third model we're preparing for is an even better, fully online, distance learning experience, better than what we have now, of course, hoping that, given three months for planning, instead of three days over a weekend, we can make it an even higher-quality experience for young people. Why are we preparing for three scenarios? One, of course, as I mentioned, we have not been given guidance yet from the state. But there has been some indication that if we want to get a sense of where the state is headed, that we were, it was suggested to us as educational leaders to take a look at the summer school guidance. There is summer school guidance, I believe, still in draft format from the Governor's Office that indicates what needs to occur in order for us to be able to have a face-to-face, in-school experience for young people. If you recall from one of my letters, Milford Public Schools and the vast majority of Connecticut districts chose not to do face-to-face summer school because, at least for our school district, the requirements were so steep and so much to fulfill in such a short period of time. We did not, with 100% confidence, feel like we could keep students safe. Some of those requirements, summer school, just to give you a flavor of it, does not allow more than 10 students in a classroom. Those 10 students at all times need to be socially distanced, no less than six feet apart. There's also a disallowance of the sharing of equipment, academic resources, playground equipment, physical education equipment, learning resources. It even requires for students to stay put in the same space and have adults travel to them. So, if you start imagining applying those requirements to a fully housed elementary school of anywhere between 300 and 400 students, or even more so at a high school with 700 students, you already start to see the challenges that we may face if we take all pre-K through 12 students back fully face-to-face in September. Quite frankly and simply, we would not have the physical space to take all our students back if we're only allowed to have 10 students in a room. But again, that's summer school requirements. We're not sure what will come for the fall. But if that's any indication, that demonstrates a challenge that is before us. So, that's why we're getting ready for three learning scenarios. As we prepare for the three learning scenarios, there are some things that weigh heavily on our mind. One is our youngest learners. We know research supports that some of the greatest amount of learning, foundational learning, occurs in our youngest learners. In fact, if you take a look at the learning rates of kindergarten, first, and second grade as supported by research, oftentimes, these youngsters learn more than a year, make more than a year's growth. On average, there are about a year and a half of growth occurring within a school year. You can, if you think of your own youngsters or those that you may know, your five-year-olds, the kind of kindergarten that enters our school building and exits is night and day. They go from potentially being non-readers to fully reading and writers and mathematicians. We're also cognizant of our older learners, those who are entering high school and really preparing a trajectory for the rest of their lives. So, we want to make sure that we support our youngest for the reasons of the rate of growth, but our older students because of the trajectory that they're trying to lay for their future. We also are very aware that learning is social. I've heard from so many parents and young people that they miss school because they miss being with others and how growth, academic growth, really goes hand-in-hand with that social-emotional piece. And being in front of a computer and learning is just not quite the same. And lastly, what's weighing on many educators' minds because initial research is already coming out, what they're referring to as the COVID slide. I know that many of you have heard of the summer slide. But the COVID slide is suggesting something that's even much more exasperated because of the varied experiences that many students have had during distance learning, coupled with the "summer break," quote-unquote, and coming back. The COVID slide research also suggests that we need to strike very quickly in September. So, this is how I propose that we move forward in developing our restart plan. There's a lot to take in on this slide. So, let me just walk you through it for a moment. Through the work of an established task force, which will be our work this month, at the center of work, as I've mentioned, I believe we put a priority on protecting lives and nurturing minds and hearts. Through the work of four subcommittees, one that focuses on operations and facilities, and I'll go into more detail in the next few slides, one on transportation, one on teaching and learning, and another work group on social-emotional learning. I believe it's going to be really important that we maintain a sense of coherence, that we have 14 schools working in a common way, operating our buildings and developing teaching-learning experiences commonly. So, we don't go off into separate directions. And in times like this, that danger does occur. I think it's really important that we continue to build our sense of community and focus on our relationships. Communication is going to be key. I think we've done a nice job of that in the last three months. But we're really going to have to ensure that we maintain that. And now, more than ever, we have to ensure that there's a level of equity for all of our learners despite their background or home experiences. So, here, this represents the visual on how this task force will move. In four work groups focused on protecting lives first, developing an opportunity for engaging minds and hearts, all along keeping those four other elements in mind. So, in the area of operations and facilities, and I use this graphic purposely, unfortunately, those board members, you as board members know how passionate I am about flexible furniture and how it impacts the learning process. Well, that plan's going to have to be put on hold for a little while because our classrooms will likely need to go back to rows, rows of desks and chairs so that we can socially distance. But that's going to require our work group to revisit all of our procedures and protocols and rewrite the manual, literally and figuratively rewrite the manual on how our school buildings run. We have to revisit everything from how students access food for lunch, how students access restrooms, what does recess look like now? How do students engage in art class? And really making sure that we're keeping all students safe in the flow of a school day. That's going to require us to revisit everything on how we, quote-unquote, "run" schools. We know that this will have a significant human resources impact. Excuse me. And we also know that, for example, if students can't share manipulatives, it's going to have a considerable impact on the amount of resources that we put into our classrooms. The work group that focuses on transportation, and I purposely pulled this out as a separate work group because right now, the summer school guidance does not allow us to fully, to put, to maximize the capacity of a school bus, that we can only put students in every other seat in a zigzag fashion. So, a typical school bus for our students, we're able to fit about 60-plus students on a bus. The every-other-seat zigzag pattern will only allow us to fit 11 students on a bus. You can imagine if that is the rule for the fall, as it is for the summer, you can imagine that we are going to have to revisit what our bus routes look like, what start and end time of schools are. All students have to have a temperature check before they get on a bus. Bus drivers are legally not allowed to get out of their seat. So, that means potentially a bus monitor every bus. That means a human resources and a budgetary impact. Students before they enter the building, if a student is being dropped off by a parent, they have to be temperature-checked. So, if you could start allowing your imagination to run, as ours have for the last month since we received the summer school guidance, having students return face-to-face has a huge impact on transportation. And that's why there will be a separate work group just for that. The task force will also, of course, have a teaching and learning work group. We are going to revitalize the work on high-quality instruction and ensure it's aligned with the vision of the learner. It is time this summer, as likely you'll hear from Dr. Fedigan in our next presentation, that we need to revisit what distance learning looks like and ensure that we get back to some of our key tenets of HQI and really look at what a hybrid and virtual learning model could look like for a five-year-old, a 12-year-old, and 18-year-old, because those potentially could look different. We'll have to revisit what schedules look like for students, make sure that our teaching and learning model adapts to the new classroom environment. If you recall, small group instruction for our first graders in reading will need to look very, very different. And that's just one example. And we have to consider the needs of our students of special needs and English language learners, and the list goes on. So, one thing to consider, though, here's something from research that I'll give you a moment to read. I will not read it to you, okay? So, if we're not careful, we will fall into the dangers of trying to remediate all students because we will feel like they are behind. But the research right now is bearing out that likely the worst thing we can do for students is just water down curriculum and give them review, 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 review. And the COVID slide research married with this is very powerful, that Dr. Fedigan will talk about the prioritizing of curriculum. So, rather than delivering curriculum in slow motion, this work group is going to have to work with our instructional supervisors to ensure that we have a prioritized curriculum that we can accelerate students through this COVID slide. Dr. Fedigan may be able to talk to you a little bit more about that. And finally, the last work group will focus on relationships, the social-emotional learning aspect that I think has been the backbone to our school district the last couple of years and has helped us get through distance learning. We are going to have to revisit the whole concept of the first day of school again. Orientation will look very different. How do you build school culture if part of it is online or all of it is online? And how do you introduce students to their new teacher if part of it is virtual? So, we have so much to think through on all three of those proposed models in this area. And that's what this work group will focus on. So, here is a very, very draft timeline. You'll notice in June, we're hoping to get state guidance. We are, just yesterday or today, I forgot, I forget the date, I'm sorry, that surveys are being administered to students, parents, and staff to get an idea of how distance learning worked for them. We will identify task force members, which will be made up of various stakeholder groups, administrators, teachers, a representative group of parents, and a couple of community liaisons. And we will develop work groups from there. I think July, we will have more concrete idea of what plan we will move forward with for each of our age groups. And we'll lay out what schools will look like physically with appropriate guidelines and procedures put in place. We will have to determine what school schedules will look like. Bell schedules may change, start and end times may change. We're just not sure, depending on the number of kids we can take in at a time. We'll have to reroute buses and really land on our instructional models, being the HQI work married with the curriculum work. And then, August, I see as a big professional learning time where we bring teachers in unprecedented times. I think the amount of days and hours we'll need to put in just to get ready for reopen will look very different in August than ever before. And hopefully, we'll be able to hold some open houses and orientations for students and families. So, again, I just want to end on reminding everyone that there are just three key pieces that are our focus, but also prevent me from sharing answers tonight in that we want to prioritize protecting lives while nurturing minds and hearts, waiting on executive orders and guidance so we know more concretely what we'll be doing, but not waiting, developing roadmap, and just being responsive as information changes day-to-day. So, that's all the information I have on how we are ramping up for the fall. Ms. Glennon, I'm happy to take questions at this time. But I can't hear you because you're on mute.
Here we go. Ms. Ratner? Can you unmute, Ms. Ratner?
Wonderful, and thank you so much, Dr. Kytaya, for that overview of all the possibilities here. It's a lot of work and a lot of thinking. What I was really thrilled is hearing about the acceleration. In other words, not looking at remediation, but let's go ahead and see where we can go from there, not backwards. And I, being, I have so much background in gifted ed, it gives me goosebumps to know they won't get lost in the shuffle this way. Thank you.
You know, I'm thankful that you bring up gifted because, as the slide noted, that acceleration is often associated with gifted students. But actually, it's not just for that special group of kids, right? Acceleration should be accessible by all students, particularly in these times. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Ms. Petrowski?
I just had, I think, a very quick question. I know this has been a real challenge for everybody, and I've certainly heard, just as everybody has, every parent saying, oh, my gosh, you know, I don't ever want to be a teacher because it's just too much work. So, I was just wondering if part of the plans or if there are any guidance or any talk in the community about some sort of guidelines for parents on how to manage their kids remotely, if that's what we're going to end up having to do in any way, shape, or form?
Thanks for the question. I think that we'll need to come out of our social-emotional work group so that we can, if you noticed, there was a line that said "wraparound services," meaning we have to wrap our arms around families figuratively to help them cope because not only is it at-home learning, I also feel like the whole management of going back to work, dealing with the reality of loss of income, changed work roles, students that may be struggling, I think our need for mental health services will increase because of what our kids have experienced. We have to wonder if we'll have some increased behavioral challenges. So, I don't know if you've had time to check, but we just put together an incredible video on resources, local resources that parents can access all throughout the summer, and that includes all of our partners, too. So, I do think that, yes, there will be guidance coming out to families on how to cope, I think, coming out of that work group, but also greater than just the school system, but as a community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dion?
Thank you. Dr. Kytaya, thank you for your work on this. It seems an awful lot like looking for the light switch in the dark. So, just the vision that you have without the lights on is pretty impressive. I do want to ask somewhat of a, it's not really hypothetical, but if you're talking based on the summer school guidelines of 10 students in a class and very rigid, structured, rigid and structured day for kids, which is what it sounds like it probably would be, is there any thought that distance learning might be the answer? Because there could be more mental health challenges from putting kids in that environment than having them stay at home and learn from home?
So, yes, it worries me what we are going to bring our kids back to because it's not going to look like school. And the whole concept of offering distance learning is two sides of the same coin for me. And this is just the world I live in. There is economic recovery and there is academic recovery. And schools, whether you want to, whether you like this fact or not, takes, plays a role in economic recovery because parents have to go back to work. And we want the kids back. So, we want to help the economy and we want to help academics. So, academic recovery, I think, is on the same coin, different sides. So, while that appears to be a good notion, I don't know that every family has the flexibility to keep their kids home for distance learning. And now, you're talking about a hybrid-hybrid model, right? So, I bring in fifth graders. And as a class of 20, we could put 10 in one room, five in another, and the other five, parents have decided to keep them home. So, now, I have to figure out, do I livestream the teacher? Do I videotape her and those kids who are at home watch later? So, now, I don't know that there will be a choice on, you can stay home or come to school. And again, that's the looking-for-the-light-switch-in-the-dark moment. And it all depends on guidance as well. I know that I've already heard some families worried about sending their kids back in the fall because of safety. I hope that is not the case because I want to just underscore over and over and over that their health and safety are number one. and over that their health and safety are number one. So I don't know that we'll be able to offer the option, Mr. DeYoung, as to whether, if we offer a face-to-face, I don't know if we can offer both.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I would say, I agree, I understand what the challenges are that you're describing. What I was saying is, even if the guidance from the governor comes down, and again, this is a bit of a hypothetical as you're dealing with, if the guidance from the governor comes down and says 10 kids in a classroom have to be six feet apart, the teacher has to come to them, they can't go to the teacher, the art teacher has to come, et cetera, et cetera. Is, is your thought that your preference would be, let's do that, get the kids in the classroom and, and deal with whatever social and emotional issues may arise? Or is there potential danger to doing that in your mind from, from a mental health standpoint?
Well, I think this is where equity comes in because not every student will have the same experience in distance learning. I can close that variance if I bring kids to school because I have more control over the variables. And I know that we will put mental health first within the confines that we have, the orders that we have, right? So we have 10 kids in rows, you know that teacher is going to make that as engaging as possible, right? Because that's, that's our magic. You know, Ms. Ratner said, or Ms. Petrowski said, you know, it's the hardest job, but there's a magic and a beauty to teaching. They'll, they'll pull it off because that's what teachers do. For me, I'm worried about equity. So maybe in your home, you're going to provide incredibly engaging opportunity for your children, but another parent who is working from home or has a grandparent watching them because they're not coming to school, that, that experience is going to be very different. And as a school system, we can't afford to do that. So am I worried? I'm worried about September because it'll be so shockingly different if those are the orders for the fall. Kids will come in, not, I think it's going to be shocking. That's why some of our August work is, how do we plan open houses and orientations for everybody? So it's not a shocking.
All right. I just want to thank you for including parents in the task force. I think that's very important because, as you know, they're the ones that were on the front lines of this for the last two or three months. So we, I as a parent, and I think many parents appreciate that there will be a parent voice in the conversation, so thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Fowler, did I see your hand up earlier? Was your question answered?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from board members on this? Okay, Dr. Kutaia, am I correct that the information sessions will be recorded? They will be recorded, at least one of them will be. So, because it'll be redundant and they'll be on our website. And it'll be very, very similar to this. The only difference would be, parents will have an opportunity to type in the chat questions that Dr. Fettigan will pitch to me and I'll be able to answer so you could get a feel for what the questions are out there. Okay, very good. Will you publish the Q and A? You know, I think part of the work of the task force, Ms. Glennon, will be to develop a FAQ. Okay. So I think that Q and A will inform the FAQ. Okay. So just to remind board members, typically, the board's role in something like this is perfrile. So we're all more than welcome to access the information session, but we typically wouldn't participate. You can listen and observe what's going on. We typically then would, would, our questions would be placed through Dr. Kutaia for all board members to benefit from. So just keep that in mind, please. And I'll provide the board with regular updates on the task force. I'll have Ms. Griffin take notes as much as possible because I'm not sure we'll be able to get to all the work groups, but there'll be a summary provided to the board and some of the weekly updates, okay? Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And then we will have, over the summer, as we mentioned, the two additional meetings that we've added in that will help us deal with the budgetary impact of whatever, of the work going forward. Absolutely, yes. Okay. If there are any other questions, we can go on to our instructional highlight. I don't see any. So feel free to move on, Dr. Kutaia. Thank you. So curriculum is an instructional highlight topic that you will see a couple times as a board a year because it is one of the key improvement strategies that we've adopted as a school district in the last couple of years. And Dr. Fettigan is leading that charge, the very talented instructional supervisor team in the teaching and learning department. So she has another update for you, giving you, as we indicated earlier in the year, so we would come back and tell you how things are going. So she's here to share a little bit of a preview of summer and a little bit of how we're preparing for the fall. So Dr. Fettigan, it's all yours. Very good. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
I believe so.
Thank you, Dr. Kutaia and Mrs. Glennon. I'm going to share my screen. Can you see this, the instructional highlight curriculum update cover? Okay, excellent. Thank you. So as Dr. Kutaia mentioned, tonight, I'm looking, I have, sorry, for some reason, this, although I'm sharing my screen, is not allowing me to, not allowing me to advance the slide.
We see your cursor, though, moving.
You can?
You want to try your keyboard?
There we go. Excellent. Thank you for your patience with that. So in tonight's curriculum update, I'd like to share with you, as Dr. Kutaia mentioned, what we've accomplished in the last year. For those board members who were able to participate in the board orientation back in November, I'd like to revisit some of the structures that we put in place to build a very strong system for our work in district on curriculum. The second thing I'd like to share is what we will be doing this summer, as Dr. Kutaia mentioned, our regular plans for curriculum writing for the summer of 2020. And then the third thing I'd like to share is how we are preparing for the fall. And some of what Dr. Kutaia already mentioned in her remarks in the last presentation, you'll see a lot of alignment between these two pieces. So first and foremost, what have we accomplished? This is work that the instructional supervisor team and I are very proud of. We've developed a systemic approach to our curriculum work pre-K-12. And the intent here is really to develop a very strong curricular coherence across grade levels, all grade levels, pre-K through 12 and across departments. So you may recall from the board orientation back in November that we shared with Board of Education members a curriculum vision statement for our work to guide our work in Milford Public Schools to create that alignment across, again, grade level, grade levels and departments within our school system. The important takeaways for the board to remember with that vision statement is really what the intent is of curriculum. Curriculum will establish a knowledge economy for our school system. It establishes those assured experiences, those rigorous teaching and learning opportunities that we want to ensure all students in Milford Public Schools have access to and can participate in. Our curriculum really is in service to the model for high-quality instruction. And really, we want to think about how we can also drive through the curriculum our vision of the learner in Milford Public Schools. You might also recall from the earlier board orientation presentation that we shared with you, the curriculum is the what. It really, again, establishes that knowledge economy and the model for high-quality instruction. High-quality instruction model tells us how. It's really the how, how are we going to reach every learner wherever he or she is, their entry point to learning? The assessment piece outlines for us, how do we measure our progress with students? How do we measure the achievement that our students are realizing? And also, probably even more importantly, assessment tells us what to do next with our learners. So it's not just to measure the progress and achievement, but also to inform our next instructional choices. And then finally, there is the piece around professional learning experiences. And that's where we invest in our adult learners. And we recognize that as we work with curriculum, it's incredibly important to continue to invest in the professional learning for our adult learners so that, again, the intended curriculum is what is the assured and implemented curriculum across our school system. You may also recall that we revised our curriculum revision calendar within the last year. The team of instructional supervisors really worked very diligently to establish the seven-year cycle. And in every future slide that I'll show you this evening about our curriculum work for the summer, I'll have a legend at the top so that you can see where in the curriculum writing process we are. You'll notice in that first year around program review, that's when we really look at the established standards in every curriculum area, and we look at a variety of programs, resources, and materials. One thing that I know for sure in Milford Public Schools, we never just purchase a program, right? We want to make sure that we really look at research-based materials and research-based practices, develop the toolkit, and develop very strong resources and materials that we can ensure will meet the needs of all learners. The second year in the cycle is where we write maps. Maps, curriculum maps are really the big picture of what we want students to know and be able to do over the course of a content or a grade level in a subject area. Year number three, we get into the writing of the implementation guide. And what's really exciting is that we will be engaging, just as we have in this past year, our educators in the work of writing the curriculum and writing the implementation guides. As we know, it's the teacher in the classroom with the student that really needs to develop and inform that guide and what they will need to have with them to meet the needs of the learners before them. Years four, five, and six and seven are around that systemic implementation, and then the cycle repeats. It's really important, and I want to call all board members' attention to the fact that at the center of this revision cycle, you'll see the model for high-quality instruction and our Milford Public Schools VOL, vision of the learner. So we know that the curriculum really provides a backbone to what we want students to experience as far as critical content and skills at each grade level. And it's really the model for high-quality instruction that will help us, again, to ensure that our students progress with the curriculum that we provide. You'll also notice that professional learning is embedded in the revision cycle, in every part of the revision cycle, years one through seven. We know teachers engage with administrators and supervisors in deep, rich reflection and will continue to evaluate and revise the curriculum, especially with regard to the implementation guides as we go to make them stronger. So the slides I just shared with you and went through rather quickly were really a review of the work of the instructional supervisor teaching and learning department. For almost, almost the past year, probably about nine months, our team really came together last summer, we became a full team in August. So when I first shared these plans in November, they were incredibly new. We've refined them, and now we're really putting those plans to use with department work, with staff grades pre-K through 12. And now, this summer, this summer, what we're going to do is engage in the writing of core curriculum. And again, as Dr. Kutaia mentioned in her remarks in her last presentation, this is really to ensure that we have common, rigorous learning experiences for all of our public school students in grades pre-K through 12. Something that's important for us to make sure that we underscore is that despite the pandemic, despite the experience of school building closures, and we know through the hard work of our students and staff, administrators, and families in the distance learning programs that we've been able to provide, we have not lost sight of the rigorous learning goals that we have for students and the very high expectations that we have for them and their experiences in Milford Public Schools. We have not lost sight of the model for high-quality instruction. The professional learning that we engaged staff in throughout the 1920 school year through March, I really do believe strengthened the distance learning experience that students and staff had from March to June. And we also have not lost sight of our draft vision of learner. And to be honest with you, this experience with the pandemic caused the instructional supervisor team, our team of administrators and staff, to revisit that vision of the learner and to really ask ourselves, in light of what we're experiencing as a nation, in light of what we've, you know, what our new reality is with COVID-19, does this vision of the learner really speak to what we want our students to really grow and, and to be able to experience as learners during their time with us? And also, to make sure that the vision of the learner is responsive to the needs of the adult learners within our community as well. So these pieces will remain front and center in our work. So here's the big picture, and I'm going to go through each of these pieces with you. There's a key at the top, which will remind you of the cycle, the seven-year cycle for the curriculum calendar, the curriculum revision cycle that we have. And I think you will recall from the November board orientation where I did share the curriculum revision calendar in a few different layouts. It's important to be able to look at the curriculum revision calendar as it's laid out here and see, in a seven-year cycle, what are we committing to our stakeholders to accomplish across grade levels and also department areas? But I also want to point out that our instructional supervisor teaching and learning department has developed a curriculum revision calendar in a few different views. So there is one that provides a view, for example, in just the departments. So we can look and say, okay, isolated with STEM, what are we looking to accomplish in the STEM areas, for example, over the seven-year period? Similarly, for humanities, fine arts, and library media, and student development and wellness. And additionally, we've also developed this, another iteration of this curriculum revision calendar where we can focus simply on the elementary level and what we're looking to accomplish pre-K 5, the middle school level, 6, 8, and the high school level, 9, 12. So that just helps us to make sure that we, again, have curriculum revision calendars that are easily able to be digested for the end user, whether it is a staff member or, or someone within the stakeholder community beyond our school system as far as the educators who are implementing the curriculum. I want to take a little bit of a dive into each of the areas now. So if we look at just STEM, and we look at 1920 and the 2021 school year, you may recall that Dr. Nobley and Mrs. Swanson shared with you an update a little while back in a curriculum instructional highlight message to the board. And they had talked about the science maps that were written at pre-K 12. So you can see, that's where, in this part, we're in a writing cycle. In a year ahead, we'll be engaging in the implementation, the initial implementation of the science curriculum, which means that we'll be engaging teachers together with administrators, building administrators, and instructional supervisors in the writing of the implementation guides. And remember, those implementation guides are what inform the daily practice of the teacher in the classroom with the student. So for example, again, in this chart, you can see that in the year ahead, we'll be writing math curriculum, grades three through five, and of course, in six through 12, we'll be engaging in a program review. What's important in that math curriculum that we'll be writing, grades three through five, is Dr. Nobley has already engaged the staff. Before we left school buildings, before the school buildings had to be closed, he was able to conduct model lessons, piloting some of the Cathy Fosno units. It's a, it's approach of contextual and functional learning for mathematics. He was able to engage the staff in the use of those units of instruction, and they were very excited and passionate about the new resource and how that will be used as one key resource in building the curriculum to come in that area. So again, I won't go through every single chart, but I just want to give you a flavor in each department of what we're looking to accomplish in the year ahead, in 2021, beginning this summer. You'll notice in the area of fine arts and library media, we'll be engaging with staff in writing curriculum, curricular maps in all three areas, music, art, and library media, pre-K through 12, with the exception of library media, pre-K through six, because those are the grade levels where our students have an actual library media class. In the area of student development and wellness, I think the best way to summarize this area of our work for you is that we had a really strong SEL curriculum. I think many of you know that. We, again, do not have a program for social emotional learning in Milford Public Schools. That is not our approach. Our approach is to look at scientifically, scientifically-based research, resources, and methods, and to develop very strong toolkits and instructional practices for our students, staff, and families. What's important to notice on this slide is that while we are in program review in the areas where we've already established very strong curriculum, in grades six through 12, we'll be writing curriculum in the areas of PE, health, school counseling, and SEL. And what's really important to notice about that in grades six through 12 is that we are looking at this area as an entire whole area, student development and wellness. So in other words, we recognize that writing curriculum in the area of PE... So in other words, we recognize that writing curriculum in the area of P E should go hand in hand with writing curriculum in the area of health. So all of those areas will be addressed simultaneously at the secondary level. In the area of humanities, I know also you heard from Mr. Messina and Ms. Morrow and work that they've engaged in throughout the year, again, to engage in program review. And that would really set them up with staff to be writing curriculum in the area of pre K through two literacy. And so what we'll be working on is a very comprehensive curriculum with focus on word study, comprehension and very well-balanced approach. Ms. Morrow, I know when she spoke with you, spoke so much about the area of literacy, making sure that the units of instruction that the teachers work to write together, balance reading and writing in all areas of literacy, all related skills. Thankfully, with the support of this board, we will continue to expand the world language program. So we will continue to write a language acquisition curriculum for our rising second grade students who will be continuing in their journey of learning and acquiring Spanish language as they move forward into second grade. And we will continue to look for alignments and cross-curricular connections in the writing of curriculum between English Language Arts and Social Studies. So I, I think what's most important here again is to remind this board, and this is actually a cover sheet that was recently shared with our entire school system and I have a link to a document that I want to share with you. What we've done across all departments and grade levels is invite our staff to the work of writing curriculum this summer as a teaching and learning department. And we believe very strongly that writing curriculum is an exercise of professional learning, right? So when you write curriculum, it gives you a chance to really dive deep into the standards, understand the relationship and articulation of the standards across grade levels. And we also recognize, and I know Dr. Katia has spoken about this so much in previous board meetings, we cannot rely only on the summer months really to invite staff to explore and understand curriculum. Because then if we do that, it's just who happens to be available for the professional learning sessions in the moment or in this particular, you know, summer example. So we are very careful to set the stage for curriculum and professional learning work this summer. But please know that ongoing throughout the year, there will be opportunities with staff to engage in professional learning, to really understand the curriculum as it's being developed in Milford Public Schools. Maybe a silver lining in the COVID-19 pandemic experience from a public educator perspective is this opportunity that we have to engage in distance learning as adult learners. So we all, again, because of Dr. Katia's vision and the support of the board, have been able to become a one-to-one district, which has been a wonderful support for our students and families, obviously throughout this experience. But we're also really excited because now that we are a one-to-one district with staff, staff can use their devices to engage in professional learning and curriculum writing beyond the walls of the school building and beyond the scope of our traditional work day, right? And work schedules. So this cover sheet really just talks about, again, the relationship between curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning and provides a very strong definition supported by the Connecticut State Department of Education around what is a curriculum map? And what is an implementation guide? Because that's very important vocabulary that we want to ensure staff in all grade levels and all subjects, subject areas is familiar with. You'll notice also at the bottom that there's reference to a virtual meeting calendar. Again, probably in their silver lining in our work in the school system is making sure that we're really in alignment and communicate a very tight, close communication, transparent communication about when meetings are happening, how agendas are being developed and work that's being accomplished. So that there is again, that system coherence with the curriculum work as we're engaging in it. I'm just going to give you a quick sneak peek to what our teachers have seen. And I hope, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see me scrolling on this document? Awesome. Okay. So this is the cover sheet, as I mentioned. And then what you would see if you were one of our team members in Milford Public Schools from the classroom teacher or public educator perspective, so you would see how we've laid out the work at the elementary level. And staff have received again, an invitation and you can see at the elementary level by department, the work that each instructional supervisor has set out to engage staff, building administrators, instructional supervisors in central office and of course our teachers in. So you can see from STEM humanities, student development wellness and fine arts. And then of course, at each level, the work that we have planned for the summer at the middle school level. And again, the work at the high school level. Additionally, there are some elements of our work that really transcend all three levels. An example of that would be Milford Teacher Academy, which is something that Ms. Kapazna and I design with administrators, building administrators, central office administrators and staff to really welcome onboard and provide a really strong support system for the adult learners joining our team, the newest public educators that will join us in Milford Public Schools in August. So you'll see examples of other professional learning opportunities as well. For example, I know we all look forward to the one day for day one. That's another example that transcends grade levels in our school system. So that invitation has already reached our colleagues across Milford Public Schools and people have indicated interest and work sessions have already begun and will continue into the summer. The third area that I wanted to talk about tonight, so we've talked about the very strong foundation and support structures we've built for rigorous assured aligned curricular experience for students in Milford Public Schools. We've talked about the work again, and you've just seen what we've outlined for our summer twenty twenty curriculum writing work. And the third part of what I want to talk to you about is the prioritization of curriculum. And Dr. Katia mentioned this in her earlier remarks. So we have all of the plans to work on curriculum and are to really enact our curriculum revision calendar. And then COVID-19 came and impacted obviously our local educational community here and, and beyond. And so something that we really need to think about is how will we prepare for the fall? When it is time for a very hopeful restart, as Dr. Katia has mentioned before, in August. We want to make sure we're thinking and being very planful and intentional around educational recovery in the aftermath of COVID-19. What will be really important for us to consider as an educational community is we have to acknowledge the impact, the very real impact of COVID-19 on students, staff and families. There will be an impact surely that's emotional and social and academic. And we have to consider all of these things as we're writing curriculum this summer. We also have to think about the fact that as Dr. Katia mentioned, students have had and staff as well, different experiences based on individual circumstances in their homes. And so the opportunity to bring students and staff back as soon as it's safe to do so allows us to address the equity piece and ensure that all of our kiddos have an opportunity to have really rich experiences and learning with their peers and with their teachers. And we'll design that in, in the way that we need to, to ensure that everyone is safe. One of the things that I think I also want to call our attention to is, and Dr. Katia mentioned this, as far as our littlest students who are learning to read, research is bearing out that our youngest learners who are, for example, learning to read may be in a literacy hiatus because of that having formal instruction during the really formative years, right? When they would first be beginning school. Again, we have to think about the experiences of students and staff that were varied as we return. And we also have to keep in mind something else, that while school buildings closed, learning continued. And because we know that our learners respond, not only have different experiences at home, but respond very differently and have different learning styles and different strengths as learners, learning did continue. Learning continued through the really rich opportunities and experiences that Milford Public Schools educators and administrators were able to offer to our students. Learning continued because of rich experiences that families were able to provide. And also, learning continued because of our kids. Our kids had the opportunity to really probably explore some passions and curiosities that they might not otherwise have had the opportunity to if they were in the same type of learning environment that they had been in. So I know even in my own home, there were new instruments that were picked up. There were different research projects that were explored. So it kind of opened, I think, some pathways for some of our learners. And we're able to learn a lot about our students and one another. We should take those pieces with us as we move forward. We will have to think about a balancing act as we come back to school. You know, we, we want to really measure where our learners are because we'll need that information to think about our next steps, right? In enacting the curriculum, where are our kids? So that we know what to do next with them to really maximize our time. But as Dr. Katia mentioned, we will have to prioritize relationships and we will have to really use formative, those formative short cycle assessments that we've spoken about before. We can assess children in a comfortable, I'll even say fun way, where they may not even realize they're being assessed, but we're helping to gain feedback from them about what they, what they're thinking, what they're understanding and what they need from us as far as our planning for their growth. The other piece is, we want to make sure, as Dr. Katia mentioned, that we are not putting students in a position of remediation. Dr. Katia and I were talking over the last few days and we, we had this conversation around the tendency to want to like go back in time, right? Well, like we finished in March and that's when school buildings closed and we went to distance learning. And so we'd be really comfortable and it would seem like, well, why don't we just think of where we left off for sure? We know for sure we saw kids in March. But we can't assume coming back to school that a student who's a first grader is in like first grade and a half. That was something that Dr. Katia mentioned the other day. And if we do really take a remediation approach, we will never catch up and we will not honor where our students individually are. We won't give them credit and acknowledgement for really where they are and what they know and what they understand and what they need. And so that's why, as she's mentioned in her presentation with the restart committee, the restart test course, the teaching and learning arm of that is really going to take a stance on accelerating our students because we do believe very strongly that that's much more responsive and will be, will be better positioned to meet our students' needs in taking that approach. I really want to make sure also that we talk about again, this idea of educational recovery. We, we have to in thinking about our return with the curriculum writing that's happening as it would have by our revision calendar and the prioritization of curriculum in the aftermath of COVID-19. I want to make sure that we're providing really intentional opportunities for our teachers to collaborate across grade levels. That'll be critically important. They each know their standards very well, but what we, there are, there's an opportunity here for our teachers to learn very well the standards that come in the grade level before and after them. So we'll be spending some time working together to make sure there are opportunities for that to happen. I've already mentioned this idea of these embedded, quick informal, formative assessments to really have an idea of where our students are and what they need. We want to again, make sure that we have rigorous learning opportunities for our kiddos across grade level and at grade level. So again, not taking on a remediation stance. And then last, but perhaps most important, right, on the list is making sure that we're responsive to the students and staff and families' social and emotional needs as we, we approach, we approach learning in, in school, as Dr. Katia mentioned, through a hybrid model or distance learning as we look ahead toward August. We are, I think, very well positioned to do that. You have seen before this research that Dr. Katia has shared with our team from the Search Institute, the developmental relationships framework. We will prioritize relationships as we transition back to school and we will also find strength in the social emotional learning curriculum that's already established at the elementary schools. It's very timely that we had already positioned our curriculum revision calendar to work on six, 12. So we will have a very tight aligned pre K through 12 curriculum to support us in our transition back. And then next, of course, now more than ever, if we think about what else our students and families and communities have experienced in most recent days, we have to take a look at our curriculum as it exists, as it's being written and as we're prioritizing curriculum to ensure that we have a lens on equity. We absolutely must study our curriculum and examine it for cultural responsiveness and to ensure that it's relevant and so that it's reflective of our students' experiences. And so that it's reflective again, of the vision of the learner that we've drafted so that not only can they explore curriculum that's culturally relevant through a scholarship loan, but also from one of citizenship, creativity, innovation and personal development. So again, just to close, we will, we've covered tonight really the structures, the many structures that we've built. We've built a very, a strong system for systemic approach to curriculum writing. We had plans and we are continuing our plans to write curriculum in the summer of twenty twenty. And then we will of course be prioritizing curriculum simultaneously. It will be like a parallel track to ensure that we're accelerating our students' growth as we restart the twenty twenty-one school year. So that's what I have for you as far as a curriculum update. And I'm really looking forward to engaging with our administrators and educators in this work this summer. And I'll take any questions as you have them.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Dr. Fedigan. Questions from board members? Ms. Petrowski?
Hi, thank you, Dr. Fedigan. I was just wondering if there was a difference in the response or the amount of response from the teachers this year versus last year? I was wondering if perhaps the exhaustion of the last few months has impacted the number of people who are willing to come in and, and help with the curriculum writing? Or if you'd seen maybe a little less excitement than you'd hoped for?
So, well, I'll answer that question, I think, with two pieces of data so far. One is we have been able to post our positions. Of course, we'll offer, as Dr. Katia mentioned, summer school in the area of credit recovery, for example, but virtual. We're not bringing students into school. I think, to be honest with you, our staff by and large can't wait to be with children again, physically in school buildings when we restart. But additionally, I know that staff is also, if it has to be virtual, looking forward to keep connection with their kids. That is a pattern that I've seen and am very grateful for. We did worry about the stamina piece. It is very taxing, as you can imagine, for any of you who have been working from home, having Zoom meetings and Google meets. It's very taxing for all of us, right? To work in this new way. But we do think that there is again, a silver lining in some of the flexibilities that have been and can continue to be afforded in working remotely. So I am really actually very pleased with the turnout. And I think because we were able to signal and signal some of this work earlier in the year when we were still in physical school buildings, we had a pretty strong investment. And you know, the teachers were so passionate about the, the model lessons that were happening, for example, in the elementary classrooms, that they all really want to kind of be the first one to have a look at those resources and materials and have voice in the development of the curriculum. So right now, it seems like there will be a very strong representation, but it's certainly something that the Teaching and Learning Department and I will keep a close eye on and be able to share more, more exact data with you as we come forward in additional. Kind of the, I envision we'll be sharing, right? Like, how did we make out this summer? And so in that next curriculum highlight, we'll be able to share more specifically. The other thing is we always look for, just I would add, the representation across each of the schools. You know, we want to make sure not only grade levels, but schools are equally represented and that will continue to be a focus area.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that. Very good. Mr. De Young?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot there, obviously a lot of work. I'm interested in this acceleration piece and I'm just kind of curious as to how that is going to work in, you know, real, real time. So if a student comes back and maybe if you can, I'm sure it's going to be a little bit different at each level, but if you could come sort of at it from a elementary, middle and high school level and what that's going to look like, because no students are being held back, right, this year? So everybody's going to be promoted to the next grade. And when they come back in September, what would the assessment look like? And then how would that acceleration in, you know, real terms work as opposed to just hypothetical terms?
So thank you for the question. So one thing I would add is, I know you, I'm sure, are aware and recall that the State Department of Ed did extend a waiver for the standardized assessments. And those, again, those long cycle assessments that do inform some development of curriculum, but they don't, we've talked before about this, they don't really tell us a lot about where a child is in the moment. Because the test, you know, the assessment happens in the spring and you have the results and the students already advanced to the next grade level, right? So, so the state was very, I think, wise to say, those won't, those types of assessments won't maybe be valid, won't be very helpful to us and also may create issues of anxiety for children. won't be very helpful to us, and also may create issues of anxiety for children who've experienced a really challenging spring semester of their school year. So the assessments will look like informal formative, very quick assessments that are embedded. And so we will be working as a teaching and learning department with staff uh, at developmentally appropriate levels, but also within content areas to talk about different types of assessments that will be really effective. Um, to really be able to measure more clearly where students are in the moment. At an elementary level, what this might look like is, while we've talked a little bit about the workshop model, the teacher will have an at-grade level lesson, right, with core standards that are, for example, at grade three in Reader's Workshop. And then after that mini lesson, the teacher will plan, have already planned um, a way to differentiate for the students in small group, maybe through guided reading or small um, skill groups, and then also individual conferring sessions. So that workshop model at the elementary and middle school level um, really helps us to differentiate, which allows for the opportunity to bring students to grade level who may be struggling or deficit in a skill area. And then also accelerate, most importantly, right, students so that we meet them where they are. So it's about meeting the child where he or she is. So that workshop model really will aid in that. And that happens beyond um, literacy. That's just a Reader's Workshop is one example, but there are elements of that that we use across subject areas. Certainly math would have the same approach. And the other piece is, so that would really be for pre-K eight. And then at the high school level, of course, we have curriculum that's written um, and aligned to standards. And we have opportunities where our students are in courses that are core, also elective scale. And then we do have students that are involved in AP courses. This summer, we are still offering AP Academy virtually. It, we can, we're not bringing students in, but we are still preparing students for those rigorous courses um, right, this summer. Students will be engaging and, and teachers, we already have teachers who are really um, already very much looking forward to and planning for those sessions. So those would be just two examples at the elementary, um, K eight and the high school level.
So if, if I'm a student that comes back in, let's say, sixth grade, or comes back, let's say, in seventh grade. Um, and I partake in some of these formative assessments. And it's discovered that I might still be at a mid-year sixth grade level, which I think is pretty, pretty reasonable to think with the COVID slide. Um, what the, they will, that student will stay in a seventh grade math class, but will be um, scaffolded by the teacher, so to speak, so that they can hopefully accelerate to where the seventh grade standard is at the time?
Yeah, so we will provide appropriate differentiation and scaffolds and supports for the students so that we can meet them where they are. And additionally, you know, as Dr. Kuta mentioned, it's looking like class sizes may be even smaller than they had, you know, than they were predicted to be, right? So the opportunity, whole group instruction may appear, small group, right? And then, of course, beyond that, kicking off of the whole group mini lesson, um, we will be making sure that we have staff to plan for small group for students so that they can be, be successful in meeting grade level expectation.
Scenario you described, Mr. DeYoung, already happens in a typical school year. The challenge is we'll likely have many more students in that scenario. So this is nothing new that our teachers will be faced with. So the scaffolding, the differentiating, um, will just be with a greater number of students.
Okay, uh, thank you both. And Ms. Glenn, and if I could just ask briefly, um, with these types of presentations, is it possible to get them emailed to us? Because I was trying to go back in part of the presentation and realized I couldn't because it was on Dr. Fedigan's screen. So is it, is that possible for the next meetings?
I'll talk to Dr. Kuta about that.
Thank you.
Unless you have two screens though, you wouldn't be able to toggle, right?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I just have it in a different window behind my Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Fedigan, Dr. Fedigan? All right, thank you so much, that was a great presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, thank you, Mrs. Glennon.
At this time, Ms. Glennon, we're ready for a human resources report by Ms. Kapazna.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's a tough act to follow, great job, Amy. So you have um, the quick listing of job postings as well as all the personnel changes for the month. Um, recommendations of retiring, retirements, resignations, terminations. And this month, there are department chair, team leader stipend listings for both high schools. That's Wahim, the referral leader stipends for all three middle schools. And I would like to report that we are up to fifteen retirement. I know that's a question this time of year, and we're up to fifteen right now.
Okay, do we have um, questions from board members on the human resources report? Okay, seeing none? Easy peasy tonight, Ms. Kapazna.
Thank you. Good, okay.
Yeah.
Um. Is Mr. V, huh, there you are, Jim, how you doing?
Hello.
Hello.
Jim, Mr. Richatelli has uh, what we annually do with the board at this time of year. Request for budget transfer is requiring action of the board this evening. Mr. Richatelli, can you walk us through it, please?
Certainly, um, thank you, Dr. Kuta, Mrs. Glenn, and members of the board. Yes, we are at that point in the fiscal year where we come to you with suggested or proposed transfers as we wind down the fiscal year and get to that point. As you know, um, under, under most, most conditions, most years, um, you, you end your year with a balanced budget with, with no, certainly no deficit and um, and no surplus. So it's usually a balanced year. Um, and in order, and in order, within the accounts of your budget, we need to cover certain operational deficits. Um, and we're able to do that with um, other areas where we have operational savings. And so um, in your package, um, I've listed those areas recommending to transfer from, and those areas where we need to transfer into, um, to cover deficits. And then, of course, um, so much of this report is dominated by the, the savings generated from COVID-19 school closures. Uh, and then the action that your board took at your May meeting, requested the city set up a non-lapsing account specifically to deal with, um, if there's any savings in this year's budget. It goes into a non-lapsing savings account held by the city, um, of which you've designated uh, future COVID expenses to come out of. Um, and so that's, that's kind of a general overview. Um, I can go through, um, I, I won't go through each one individually. Of course, if you have any questions, I can, but um, about nine hundred thousand dollars of the one point two million, roughly seventy-five percent can be attributed to the savings um, from the COVID-19 uh, school closure. And I've listed those in the narratives under each of the accounts. And I, but, but um, I also, I want you to understand that um, it's not nine hundred thousand dollars in actual savings, because some of, um, some of that money has, uh, will be required to cover, as I've talked to you in the past, um, cover salaries of programs that usually are funded by tuition or um, fees um, or other sources. Specifically, we've talked to you about, uh, under the, the governor's executive order, we needed to continue to pay our employees. But some of those um, employees previously were funded by things like um, the Ready to Learn Program tuition fees that parents paid. Uh, same thing with the pre-K tuition. And um, and, and other areas where um, where, oh, and, and, and a big one this year is food service. Uh, we had to continue to pay all of our food service employees um, while not taking in um, quite a bit of paying customers, as you will, um, at the point of sale in the cafeterias. So loss of revenue, um, we, we have to make up for that. So in those areas, um, and you won't see that within your budget because those programs are funded. Programs that are accounted for in our grants department. So just a general overview, um, you know, summer schools, um, as you know, the scope of summer programming is significantly reduced, so we project the savings there. Uh, teacher substitutions, um, goes without saying with, without um, actual physical classroom teachers. We, the, the need for substitutes just wasn't there for about a third of the year. Um, secretarial salaries, um, thi- this, um, this really was not COVID-related. You'll, you'll see COVID-19 listed on that. But what this was, was we had um, a number of vacancies. And when we uh, projected our, our twenty twenty-one budget, you will recall that there are uh, two secretarial reductions in the, in, in staff. And so we knew we had those um, vacancies coming up. And we didn't fill them because we knew we were going to um, not, or we were gonna reconfigure the secretarial responsibility in the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, and then, um, of course, it didn't make any sense. Once offices closed, uh, it wouldn't make any sense to bring uh, new employees in uh, with the COVID-19 closure. So adult education didn't run for a third of the year. Uh, marine sciences didn't take field trips toward the end of the year. Other pupil personnel services, um, the, the majority of, of the, this was because there were less nursing services that were required um, because of individualized um, needs of students. Um, there was this probably a portion of that, that was COVID-related uh, because we didn't need as much nurses, but really it was because of just specialized individual needs that um, just did not um, come out as anticipated. Um, contracted services, that was not COVID-related. That was, um, we were blessed by a mild winter this year. And so we required less outside contractors to help us um, shovel and plow our school, schoolyards. Um, electricity and natural gas, definitely. Uh, electricity, natural gas, and water. When you don't use the, the lights at night, when you turn off all of the computers for a third of the year, um, that's a tremendous amount of electricity that is not being needed. Natural gas, uh, combination of the COVID closure, but most of the um, heating season was over by uh, the, the March closer in um, uh, in March of, uh, March sixteenth of this year. So the majority of that really was the mild winter and less, the, the, the less amount of consumption that we needed. And water service, same thing, about a third of the year where we're not running water in the schools. Um, I would also point out that in, in electricity, um, and your board is, has, has um, been following this since we went to solar panels on uh, thirteen of our fourteen schools. And um, a portion of this savings is due to uh, the solar panels. The majority, the, 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 your majority of it is because of the um, COVID closure. But we would, we would project, it's very difficult. And for, for new board members who don't, um, who, who'll just refresh your memories um, of how the solar program works. In effect, we lease our roof spaces for a period of twenty years. Uh, the solar generation company puts the panels up fully at their expense. So the district put out no, um, no upfront costs for the solar panels. And the way the program works is whatever um, electricity is generated through those panels, we purchase it from the um, from the solar company at a reduced rate, slightly reduced rate, and I mean very slightly reduced rate, from uh, what we would normally pay from the generation company. Um, there's, there's two sides, there's two sides to your electric bill for the most part. Um, there's the generation side, which, which is where the electricity is um, produced. And that's um, in our case, two different places, at the power plants or um, on the roof, on the solar panels. And then uh, the bigger portion of the savings comes from the transmission or the transportation of the um, of the electricity. So if the uh, transmission is coming from um, a, a power plant, if it's coming from Milford Power, UI charges us for that. And so um, I don't get the kind of technical here on the uh, on the electricity, but I knew this would be one of the questions that you would ask. So it's, and it's very difficult to pinpoint exactly what the difference is of what we would have paid um, if the panels were not on the roof. We want to get one full year of all schools being online. Um, and then we really will dig in and we'll analyze. Um, but rest assured, we are saving. Um, it's, it's not a huge savings, and I've said this before. Um, it's not a huge savings, but it's a savings just the same, and it's the environmentally friendly thing to do. Um, so we're, we're proud of that, but um, just probably went too far on with regard to budget transfers, but um, wanted you to know about that. Account forty-three oh-two, repairs to equipment, preventive maintenance. Um, those are both COVID-related, things that we wouldn't, would have normally done, but didn't because of the uh, the schools being closed. Um, building projects, um, we're, we're just, we're, we're looking at what we have um, and looking what might be coming down the road. And we're really kind of just reprioritizing um, what we, what we have now and what we may need in the future. Under the building projects, roughly a hundred thousand dollars that um, the, that's coming out of really two accounts. Uh, your, your board set up a um, a replacement cycle um, for classroom painting and a replacement cycle for classroom cubbies. And, and that's generally where that, um, where that hundred thousand dollar savings will come out of. And grounds projects, not a big amount, but uh, we'll just defer, um, you know, a, a few of the smaller grounds projects um, in order to um, look at the bigger picture that we have coming down the road. So that's where the money is, um, that's where we have savings generated. And then we are transferring really into two accounts at this point. I'll remind the board that I come to you again in July. Um, it's actually after the close of the end of the fiscal year. It's the, it's the uh, closed, clean up the books and, and close out the year session where we ask you to make all of the final transfers that we really have made already in order to um, clean up the books. So um, as I've mentioned to you before, especially at budget time, um, the, the cost of health insurance for our retirees continues to rise and continues to rise dramatically. Um, it's, it's due to um, it's experience, it's, it's, it's based upon our experience and claims history. And it's also due to the fact that we have more retirees that are on our rolls. Um, and that's a good thing because we're, we're uh, retirees are living longer and, and uh, but we have to pay the health insurance. And so that's, it continues to rise. So we have a shortfall there of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then um, in, in special education, this is, um, this is an anomaly for this year. This, the deficit really represents what normally would have been funded by the state's excess cost grant. Um, this year, we, we had some discrepancies um, and inconsistencies in the reporting that the filings that go to the state, it's a complicated system. And um, and it, through the course of that reporting, there were um, some um, some thresholds that were not met, some thresholds that were met. And anyway, the, 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 the long run of it all is that we've um, we've cleared it all up. But the books closed as far as excess cost grant on March first. Um, and so any supplemental filing with the state has to take place um, during the summer and, and potentially through um, state legislative, uh, special, special legislation to our state delegation, who, who we have been working through. So we do anticipate that that money will be coming back in the excess cost grant. Um, but it will be in next fiscal year. but it will be in next fiscal year and not this year. So we're having to cover it in this year's budget. And then the last piece, of course, is the amount that we believe at this time that we will be able to transfer into the non non lapsing account. As Dr. Katia talked to you about in in her presentation, we expect that these costs are going to be immense. And so anything that we're able to save and generate this year to put into that account is going to help down the road. I I fear it's not going to cover everything that we're going to need. And that's a that's a national discussion that's going on right now, as you know. But we'll cross that bridge as we come to it. But anything that we're able to put into it now helps in that regard. With that, I will be quiet and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Richatelli. Questions from board members on these transfer figures? Mr. Richatelli, just to clarify, on the tuition, the four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, so when that comes back, that'll go to the city, that grant goes to the city, correct? Will we just leave that with the city? Or will it come back to us ultimately?
No, it will stay with the city unless unless we need it to cover a deficit next year.
Okay.
But we
Okay. So we will it'll we'll have to ask for it under the under the normal process.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then, so I just wanted to point out, I think it's important to note that meanwhile, you know, million to a million dollar, a million two hundred dollars is a large sum of money. I'm in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking about a ninety, what ninety six, seventy million dollar budget, it's not. But when when I look at where this money is coming from and how much of it was due to the fact that how much of the the surpluses were due to the fact that school closed in March, it strikes me that under normal circumstances, this would have been a really, really tight budget, it seems. And I think that's, you know, needs to be stated. You know, if you take out the few things that were not COVID related, you know, considering that we, you know, we would have done the hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of buildings and grounds and projects would have been carried out under normal circumstances. So that would not have been a savings. And many of the other items that, you know, I just think it's important that the board keeps that in mind, that as we talk about future budgets, you know, when we get into next year's budget cycle, this budget really would have been a very, I think, a very tight budget. So kudos to administration for carefully administering the monies that we entrust well, that the monies that the city entrusts us with, our taxpayers entrust us with. So thank you.
If I could comment, that's going to be our goal moving forward, that we we've established new systems and procedures, thanks to Mr. Richatelli's support, that refine the budgeting request process that starts way back in September, October of each year. And it requires detailed explanation and backup of what buildings are requesting. So we're trying to get very close to what requested budget and actual expenditures will be, closing that gap. But that also leaves very little room for unexpected expenses.
Right.
So if there is, so anything can happen, we are trying to budget to true reality.
Okay. So now that you bring that up, I think an important point then to keep in mind is the way that this board has typically budgeted for buildings and grounds projects. We vary typically rely on excess surplus at the end of the year to fund what we really need to do rather than putting it into our actual budget, operating budget. And so much of it is left to chance. While we have a very, very long list of need in terms of buildings and grounds in the district, the reality is that very little of it gets done year to year. And much of it is very contingent about how much money we have at the end of the year left over. So that might be something, a change in how that how we present that might be in order as well. So
Good point, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, Ms. Petrowski, do you have a motion?
I do. Una Petrowski. I move that the Milford Board of Education approves the twenty nineteen twenty budget transfers in the amount of one million two hundred and twenty one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Griffin, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Adam DeYoung.
Yes.
Andrew Fowler.
Yes.
Rita Rita Hennessy.
Yes.
Emily McDonough Soza.
Yes.
Warren Palowski.
Yes.
Una Petrowski.
Yes.
Betsy Ratner.
Yes.
Nicole Wasson.
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Yes.
And Susan Glennon.
Yes.
Ten zero.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Richatelli.
You're welcome, thank you.
But you're up again.
Onto dispersment, yes. Members of the board in your package, I've listed all of the dispersments of the district that exceed fifteen hundred dollars in accordance with your policy governance and for the month of May. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have on that list.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Palowski?
Hi, yes, thank you. I was just wondering who has a T-Mobile phone that falls under line or five four oh one? Is that is that just is that administration? Is that the principals?
It's it's administration, the principals do not. There's a number of central office folks that that have district cell phones, and that's what they are.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Palowski?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions from board members on the dispersment report? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Kutaia, that concludes your report?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Petrowski, do you have a motion for the consent agenda? Did something happen to Ms. Petrowski?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay. My apologies, I move that the Milford Board of Education approves the consent agenda items, May eleventh, twenty twenty, business meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Griffin, we'll take that as unanimous. I'm sorry, forgot about the roll call vote. I'm still getting used to this. All right, do we have any board comment this evening? Okay, I see no board comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention briefly that I had the pleasure of participating in the Eastshore eighth grade drive-through graduation. Just a couple of things I wanted to note. First of all, I think the students were thrilled to be able to do something and see some of their teachers. And Mrs. Carlson and Mr. Pacelli put on a wonderful experience for all the students. I think when I left, they said they had seen about eighty percent of their students, which I thought was pretty remarkable. And the one thing that I wanted to just sort of mention is the glowing way that the staff and the teachers spoke about working at Eastshore Middle School. You don't very very often hear people talk how how much they love their job, but they do. And and it's very evident just by talking to them for even a couple of minutes about their their job and how much they've missed it. So I was really happy to be able to participate in it. I appreciate the administration for extending an invitation. And kudos goes out to that whole team at Eastshore Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Ms. Petrowski?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a a comment about the the letter that recently went out from the entire school administration regarding all of the the racial issues that have been going on and and their support, as well as Dr. Fedegans talking about how that is going to be an integral piece of the curriculum. And I really, I really just wanted to say I appreciate the care and the thought that have has gone into all of this from our administration. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petrowski. Ms. Ratner, did I see your hand up?
Not anymore because she just
All righty, so ditto. Mr. Palowski, did you want to make a comment? Your hand is still up, or is that from before?
That was from before, I will lower it.
All righty, thank you. Any other board comment?
There. There we go.
Okay, all right. So with that said, we have a motion, Ms. Petrowski, to move into executive session?
Yes, Una Petrowski, I move that the Board of Education adjourns into executive session to discuss salaries for the Chief Operations Officer and Assistant Superintendent. And Dr. Katia is invited. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board members, so what we need to do is we need to actually leave this meeting. And so you're going to leave the meeting and then we need to reaccess the addition, the second link that we were sent.
Ms. Petrowski?
Hi. All right, so we're just waiting for Ms. Griffin to come back on. Actually, we probably don't necessarily have to, we don't really, no. Oh, she's there, there she is. Blessing?
Yes.
Are we back live?
Yes, this was live, yeah.
Okay, and it's still recording, all right. So at 9:48, I will call the meeting back to regular session. Ms. Petroski, do you have a motion?
I do. Una Petroski, I move that the Milford Board of Education approves salary increases for the Assistant Superintendent and the Chief Operating Officer as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. All right, do we have any discussion? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you, I just want to say that I think that this is a very reasonable increase for both Mr. Righdtelli and Dr. Fedigan. I think they, along with Dr. Gutaya, have done an incredible job, probably the best in the state, by my estimation, during this very difficult time. And under normal circumstances, they've excelled as well. So I think it's very reasonable, and I will happily support it.
Any other comments? Hey, seeing none. Ms. Griffin, do you have a roll call vote, please?
I do. Adam The Young?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Emily McTannasosa?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
Yes.
Una Petroski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner?
Yes.
Nicole Watson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Okay, 10-0.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Ms. Petroski, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I do. Una Petroski, I motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, all, thank you so much. We will see you all on June 22nd. And stay healthy and well.
Have a great day.
Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.